Pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards.
Here.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Here.
Councilwoman Stephen White.
Here.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Present.
City manager, Joe Solberg.
Here.
City attorney, Sam Harold, Chief Mike Posey.
Here.
Chief Jimmy Suttle.
Here.
Building code and zoning enforcement officer Marty Lewis.
Here.
Street Commissioner Mike Starrett, sorry, Public Works.
Done.
Sanitary Director Dee Evans.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment this evening?
How you doing? Yeah. No, Brett.
Okay. First on the agenda is consideration of appointment of council member to fill vacant Ward four seat. Where that Curtis guy moved out of town and abandoned us. And with us this evening, we have Adam Sims. Do you know everybody here?
Um, I think I met most of everybody here at the last meeting that I think.
Okay. Are we ready to take action on that application for candidacy?
All right. I will move to appoint Adam Sims as the council member to fill the vacancy in Ward four.
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, almost, and now the city clerk will do the oath of office.
Is this where I'm saying he receives something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you have to say, let's stand and raise your right hand. I, Adam Sims.
I, Adam Sims.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of serving as an elected official.
The duties of serving as an elected official.
For the city of Weston, city council, for Ward four.
For the city of Weston, city council, Ward four.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
For the best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You are in. And this is the second.
Yes.
Next is discussion with Kim Lehorn regarding Riverfront project.
All right.
Thank you.
There's Tristan.
Here she is.
Tristan, give me just a second because I've got YouTube in the background streaming and we were getting feedback. So let me go try and fix that.
Yeah, sure thing. I can only imagine that my head is a giant floating like Wizard of Oz apparition on the wall right now.
No, it's not as bad as you think.
Okay, that's good.
All right, I guess start with council. Council, have any questions for Kim Lehorn?
Go ahead, Sherri. Oh, I did have a question about the dam in the drawing. It is my understanding there, there are a lot of concerns about the dam being removed or altered in, in order for kayaking. And I guess my request was for a takeout and put-in. However, my, my question is, will there be studies in the future? I think the, the drawing showed a portion of that dam where kayaks could go around it. My question is, will there be studies done to determine the integrity of the dam? Maintaining the integrity of the dam if, before anything is altered.
Yes, anything that we do in the river channel, there's going to have to be a lot of studies about that. Both what sort of water flow is going through to be able to make sure it's a no-rise situation. But then also with any of those features affecting the dam, making sure that it maintains its structural integrity. So that way, if there are any storm events, weather events, that dam will remain in place when it get knocked out. So the, what the master plan is showing are two options. One is portage option, so a takeout of the people walking around. And then was also shown in the master plan is a chute option. So the dam would be, the dam level would be maintained. I can't say that the dam itself would be maintained. It might be found that the dam would have to be taken out and replaced in order to maintain that structural capacity and maintain that water elevation that we understand is important for the residents. But then the chute would be able to provide kind of like a little like slip and slide option that would allow kayakers who are looking for more of a, of an adventurous experience to be able to go over top of the dam. There would be more of a, kind of a C shape that they would take. So the water will remain in place, but this is also conceptual master plan. So we haven't done any studies of the dam. We don't have a structural analysis of it now. There would have to be, there definitely have to be that as well as the structural engineering drawings that will go into any future plans for that chute that will go around the dam. It might end up being that, there are a lot of options. It's a master plan. And so the city can consider that at the point that they are looking to be doing improvements at the dam. It might be found that the, the cost feasibility or the structural implications or the liability associated might sway the city for one direction or the other. So, but that's, that's one of the things about a master plan of it's, it's an idea, it's a concept. And then once you actually come down to the implementation, construction of the project, there are a lot more of like the feasible factors and cost factors that are part of that.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Glad that was helpful.
Yes.
I don't have any other questions. Tristan, is there anything else in particular you want to share with us?
I, I don't think so. We're excited to be moving forward with the next step, which is the environmental documentation with protocol for HUD, which is where the grant or the majority of the funding is coming from. So we're going to be starting that and then the 30% construction documents, which are needed in order to, part of that environmental, to be able to show that there's not going to be impact to the, or evaluation of what that impact might be with a lot of them being of finding no acidic impact. Like we aren't impacting farmlands. And so the construction drawings are going to be showing that. But then also like what the improvements are in relation to the flood. So those two kind of go hand in hand of starting with that environmental, but then the 30% drawing. So once we have those in place, we'll be looking forward to moving forward with the final construction documents. We're working closely with Joe during all of this process and that there may be some opportunities for city council to be pursuing some additional funding sources to allow the HUD grant to move to stretch further. For example, there are like playground specific grants that are open there. So if you're able to secure one of those to be able to fund the playground equipment, that means that the HUD grant funding can be stretched a little bit further for some other items that don't have as niche specific grant opportunities associated with it.
What is your timeline on completing the environmental studies that are required?
Uh, we should have them completed in the next several months.
The next, pardon, weeks or months?
Months. Months.
Oh, okay.
What else, everything else?
No, I really appreciate the clarification. I think it was very important to a lot of residents for the clarification and explanation that you gave me. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, glad I was able to help.
Well, thanks for hopping on with us, Tristan. We appreciate, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Look forward to working with you guys more soon. Hope the rest of your meeting goes well.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Bye.
You too.
Thank you.
Next discussion of vacant structures ordinance.
All right, I have the minutes from the last special session. I thought I would just read a recap of some of what we've already discussed and then open up the conversation to discuss things again. Marty thought that the ordinance should have another look through to make sure change, to make changes that were needed. For instance, the wording for a second residence, is it vacant if someone lives there six months out of the year? Is that property being taken care of? Another item of concern was were properties that were for sale that no longer have a vacant fee from the city. He thought that having a 50 cents sign from Walmart thrown in the window was sort of a cop-out and thought that it should be professionally listed or at least on a professional website is for sale by owner. Or it can, it can still be placed on national sites like zillow.com and others as for sale by owner. Louis also said that there were people that do not have their home for sale or that do have their home for sale, but it's at a price that's nowhere near a price it would sell for. For instance, a home listed at $450,000 on a home that he believes may reach a little over $100,000. Did they have it for sale with, in a way that satisfies the code? But he feels that they need to read, that they need to reach a reasonable price or a fair market price or some other verbiage fair to the homeowner and to the city. Sam Harold was present, does have some concerns with the right of the property owner and will look into the matter and some of the possibilities. Debbie Gump from Ward three was not in attendance, but she sent some concerns to Solberg about persons on a fixed income and should they be fined? With the amount of vacant structures, the fee goes up each year beginning with 150 to 300, 600 to 1,000 each year. Sherri Rogers felt that we should not exempt anyone and that this ordinance was created with, with a thought in mind that maybe they should think about selling their property. Louis said that there were also persons who had purchased a building permit, which does forego the fee, but that they are not doing anything to the home, no improvement at all. He feels that that rule which needs changed as well. Sam, Joe and Marty will work together to see if a solution can be reached. So I guess at that point, do we want to open that up to discussion?
I think we also had, Marty also brought to our attention that we have already set precedent with some properties that have been donated to, eventually donated to the city and as a result, torn down. So it's kind of, our concerns were changing midstream and the fairness of it to the previous people who were paying those fees.
Well, my thing was that the adjacent vacant building sits on, how many feet do you think that is? From her house to the other building.
Thirty, maybe.
Thirty? But she maintains that whole property. She's 87 years old and she mows her own, that's a lot of land. It's on a hill too. And she mows all that. But she is on a fixed income at being 87 and she has, the person I'm referring to has routinely paid up until this last time and really does not have the money to do that. But it's part of the homestead area.
It's all one deed.
I don't know if it's one deed or it's two. It's two deeds, but it was her brother's. But she now uses that as a storage building for the lawnmower and ladders in it.
So it's a garage?
Well, it still looks like a house, but it's a little, what would you say, Marty?
It's a small house.
Very small house.
Yeah. And it needs work. I mean, it's, she doesn't have the money to put into it. You know, it's got, the windows are rotting, coming apart. I'm, I'm caught in the middle on this thing because Mr. Hyatt out the road had a similar situation, different parcel of land, the house that was there. He was using it for storage as well and it was dilapidated condition. You know, and we finally put it under the, on the demo list and all that and bid it out. And then he reluctantly ended up signing it over to the city because he didn't have the money to, to afford either vacant fees or the demo cost either. My concern is what happens with people like him or the, that, the lady that was right next to that. They come back and say, you forced us to give up our house. We didn't force anybody, but.
Yeah, anytime, you know, you're making change to it. Because when you put this out here, I, I don't think it was intended to hurt the small person.
Right. And, and I sympathize fully with the people.
It's, it's, you know, now do I pay this and give up this property that's been in my family forever? Where do I eat?
Well, I think that our concern is fairness for all citizens.
I agree.
And fairness for all citizens and we change it because of one person.
No, I'm not saying, I think it affects several people, senior citizens who are on fixed income that still, you know, can maintain the property around it. It's not like anybody in the neighbor, in her neighborhood has complained about it. At this point, we don't have a mechanism in place to identify those people so that the, the, the credit is given equitably. But that's the problem.
The thing is, is, you know, is the in, the increasement of the, of the fine, so.
If I can, if I can. Can I speak? Do you care?
No.
I think I'm the one that created the ordinance when I was coding for officers and I got the direction from the council that we were trying to hit some of the businesses that was on Main Street and make a little concern for them. And that's why the increments went up so fast. And I think that's what we were doing. I don't think we were trying to, to target all the, the homeowners at the time. So I'm just letting you know that's why the, the, the price tag went up more. Because I think we were trying to work with businesses that was on, was Second Street. The one that was up above, uh, Kitsonville and the one down in Haleville. People was wanting to rent those and they, the company just didn't want to rent those. So we were trying to make that a little stiffer for where that, maybe they would rent. But just letting you know that that's where, where I, that's probably been about five years ago that I probably done that.
Yes, and it was created to, to cause some movement on properties, which it has done. It has done that. And also we had out-of-state owners on properties.
That's a lot of it too.
On properties that were residential properties and commercial properties that never rent, that they never maintain. They, they don't do anything with the properties that they're, and that's another reason why we created that ordinance was to create some movement on some of these.
I mean, I was all with the ordinance. I just, you know, this was something brought to me and so I'm bringing it out. And obviously it affected more than just the person who brought it to me. So that's why I was bringing it up. Sure. Sam, did you have any updates for us on this?
Well, it's kind of, no, I don't, but I can, I can update, I can update an ordinance as liberally or as conservatively as the council wants it. And I can certainly work with Joe on the language of it. But, you know, you have to make these hard decisions as to how you'd like to have it for the community. You know, I, I'm an attorney and that's what I do is I can write language about, you know, how the council wants it. But, you know, these particular areas, you've got to decide how, how strict you want to be or how liberal you want to be with it.
Well, I think in our last meeting, it was decided to just maintain the status quo. Is that, that's correct, isn't it? You know, unless council wants to reconsider their position.
Oh, I was, you know, went at the last meeting, but this was discussed and I appreciate the time. But this is the reason why, you know, because it was creating such hardships on that. But I think, well, I think, were you questioning on the, the right of the property owner to charge what they want for the land? Is that what you were asking, yeah, of the minutes?
Yeah, I think, I think that was the thing that we needed to rope Sam in on. And, and to be candid, me, Marty and Sam have not gotten our heads together on this yet. But I think the, the thing that's going to be the, the biggest maybe challenge to figure out wording that works is, is how to say, you putting your, your, your $20,000 house up for sale for $1.5 million does not satisfy our requirement. How, how do we do that?
That's a, that's a slippery slope with rights of privacy, I'm sure.
Stephen, you want to leave?
I, it's hard. That's, that's, it's a, you, when you get into a subjective situation like that, it's difficult. I know last time we kind of came to the conclusion of, well, if you do it for one person, you got to do it for it right now. To the mayor's point, you know, if we did have some sort of mechanism in place, I would absolutely be open to who's on a fixed income and kind of how to evaluate it from there. You know, if we have a separate scale for someone who's on a fixed income with vacant structures. I know we also talked about some of the difficulties with having vacant structures is one person owns multiple buildings. They're not running them out. They're just sitting there, right? And which is a vast, a different situation than what you're talking about. So, you know, I'm definitely open to looking at some sort of mechanism to identify these things without obviously stepping over people's rights, even rights to privacy. So, you know, how we're going to fare that, I don't know. But, so I'm definitely open to.
Thank you. You start asking people to prove their income.
Right.
You're, to get pretty sticky, that's dicey, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So where do we leave this for now? You guys were still going to get your heads together, right, and put together?
We still have our marching orders from the last meeting. I guess if there are different marching orders, then we can receive those, but.
I'm not hearing any other than while you're reviewing others that have been done, if, if you come across or if you think of a way that the council might consider that change in the future, then bring it before us. I guess that's my advice.
Okay.
Yours?
I just think when we did this, we, we didn't have the intention of really making people act. We knew, we knew the, the players we were targeting were developing new ordinance to try to get some movement. And so we'll leave it with you guys for now.
And next is consideration of the HDL invoice.
Okay, um, just a real quick reminder about HDL and, and collections. So we use two different collection agencies for two different categories of things. Um, HDL is the collection agency that we use for B and O taxes and business licenses. Um, and I don't know how they do it. I wish I did know how they do it, because if I knew how they did it, I wouldn't need them. Uh, but there, they managed to find folks who are engaging in commerce in the city who we haven't seen, we haven't found. Uh, and then they send those folks letters and say, hey, we believe that you owe the city of Weston uh, a business license, we believe that you owe the B and O taxes. Um, and then, uh, those groups pay us and then HDL sends us an invoice for fifty percent of what they helped collect. Um, normally, it's really not that much. The invoice, um, this quarter, they found, you can see it that, that the invoice is actually several pages long, but you have the first page in front of you. That top group that they found doing business in the city of Weston, um, it resulted in an eleven thousand dollar collection. Uh, because it resulted in an eleven thousand dollar collection, it results in an invoice that's above the city manager's approval threshold. Um, so we already have the money, we did get the money. Um, and it's, like I said, it's a group that we didn't know was out there doing this and I knew how HDL has a magic wand and knows what everybody's doing out there, we wouldn't need them, but this is why we've continued to use them. The other collection agency we use, and you'll probably see some more stuff from them coming months, is Waypoint. Um, and that's our collection agency for, uh, municipal fees, fines and services. Uh, so that's a little bit different because we tell them who owes us money. With HDL, HDL tells us who owes us money. They go out and find the groups and say, we believe this group owes you money. Um, so anyway, this, uh, this HDL invoice, because of this, this one large collection they made for us, comes in about city manager's authorization threshold at seven thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Question, whatever happened to Datamax?
Datamax got sold out into two bits, HDL and Waypoint.
Oh, okay.
So this, this, because our, our contracts were actually with Datamax.
Okay.
Um, and then when they, I don't know if they, because I think, I think they only sold half the company and they sold that to HDL. And then they kept the other half, because on our Waypoint stuff, half of it's branded Datamax still, and then half of it's been updated to new branding with, with Waypoint. Uh, but so, yeah, it used to be all one great big collection agency, um, that almost every municipality, I think, that's serious about this stuff is using, um, and within the last couple of years, they just sold half the business and rebranded the other half.
All we entertain a motion to make payment to HDL for seven thousand one hundred forty-nine sixty-six.
I move the payment as seven thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents to HDL.
There a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries. Next, city manager update.
I have a few things for you. Um, one, it's getting to be about the time that we'd like to do another sale of fixed assets. That's when we do either silent auction of, of things or however they decide to, um, get rid of property that we think usually is valued at a thousand dollars or more, some kind of capital equipment. Mike, do you want to tell us a little bit about some of the things?
We have some things that we're like, some lawnmowers, it's not running, it's going to take a good little bit to get them going. And, um, we're, we're down to the point where we're contracting all this stuff out anyway, so um, we have lawnmowers, we, Jimmy, go put that siren in there also, you said you didn't want it. Uh, we got that, we've got some, some filing cabinets and, and a lot of this is probably, each item is going to be less than, what do you think?
Well, so the, the threshold is a thousand. When it's, when something's worth less than a thousand dollars, we don't necessarily have to auction it off. But some of this stuff, like even our filing cabinets that were a thousand, auctioning it sure be thrown in the dump.
I, I would say if we, if we do all this, put it all together, it's going to be more than a thousand dollars, so um, it's just some stuff that we're doing and you want to talk to them about the slate that we were talking about here?
Yeah, so I, so I guess there's, there's two questions related to this, because we also have some stuff in this building that we'd like to put in the auction as well. Um, some old printers and stuff like that, they're sitting around collecting dust. Um, and I guess because I've not been party to running that before, I'd like to know what council's desire on this is. Do you want a list of the equipment that we plan to auction? To approve the list first, or what's your, what's your property disposal desires?
What is proper, Sam?
For getting rid of a property? Just, you, you, I mean.
Should council review a list prior to the sale and approve it?
The only thing you're legally required to do is put it on the upper market. Um, but other than that, council doesn't necessarily have to review anybody. You can leave it up to the city manager to handle it.
There you go.
Okay, alright.
Will that be on gov deals?
We usually don't put it on gov deals because we don't have anything that's going to sell for enough to justify that commission that we would, because I think, I don't know, it's like thirty percent commission or something, most of this stuff. So like, so the, the statute says that if it's worth more than a thousand, you're supposed to get rid of it on the upper market, but if it's worth less than a thousand, profit disposal is kind of at the, at the whim of the city. Some, a lot, most of this stuff honestly is probably worth less than a thousand dollars. It's just that, you know, when you've got a tractor there, you think, well, I'm not going to just take that to the, so we're kind of voluntarily, and same thing with the printers. Legally, we can throw a printer in the dumpster and it would be fine, but we're kind of sitting here saying, well, somebody's going to pay twenty dollars for that, so let's get our twenty bucks. Um, but, uh, so there's.
Yard sale, wow. That's what it sounds like you have.
Yeah, it is, it is that, it is that level of stuff. But so then the, the one other thing we had a question about was, we still have a lot of slate from the Columbia Club. Um, we held onto it because maybe we thought there's value there. I do have a piece of slate with it River Trout painted on it in my office that I bought when they did the
Right.
uh, one round of stuff they did with that, but we've not really found any other use for it since then. Um, is this something you all are open to seeing be put in the auction? Is this something that you want to see something else done with?
Don't comment on that. It's over in our yard and we back into it all the time and it's. And I'll be honest with you, what I'm going, trying to make way to move some stuff around over there, because we are proud of since we have all merged here and, and we're just trying to make way of cleaning the place up and make some storage.
Think we possibly check with the art teachers at the high school to see if they would like to have any of that to do projects with the, with the kids?
Absolutely.
I don't think they're going to want all of it.
Yeah.
I just think they could make some nice projects.
And the art council.
If they wanted, I'll take some to them. I mean, I'll be happy to take it to them, but I'd just like to get it out of my yard.
When they tried that, when they did that thing before, tried to sell them for ten bucks a piece, whatever, well, they sold like twenty pieces.
Yeah, no, but these are things that the kids could do and take home and materials.
Oh, you stand still, you want to take a picture?
Sounds good.
They, though.
As long as you all get, y'all okay with it, we will give away to anybody, I don't think.
Yeah.
Kids right now, I think, they're just in the way.
Sounds good.
Um, update on the ambulance stuff, uh, we have almost collected enough money that justifies paying off the ambulance that we bought. Uh, we still have at least through country roads, um, we've almost collected enough to justify paying it off. Uh, but when the guys went out for a run the other day that it had snowed, uh, I think we pretty quickly learned downsides of having a rear-wheel-drive ambulance. Everybody was fine. It was just not something I think they want to go through again. Um, so something that I'm probably going to be bringing to you at the November regular session, um,
December?
Yeah, December regular session, I'm sorry, well, dang. Um, is, uh, the, the purchase probably through country roads again of an all-wheel-drive ambulance. Um, also then just with the payoff of the other ambulance. So we'll, we'll pay off the ambulance we'll have. Um, and then we'll look at financing an all-wheel-drive ambulance. Um, and I have it in front of me, just so you get the sticker shock today and you don't get it next month. Um, it's going to be just shy of one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Um, but.
That's quick to recover.
Well, yeah, so the other one, what did we all pay, forty thousand?
Sixty.
What was it?
Sixty.
Sixty, um, and we've recovered that in six months.
Is the other one already equipped, fully equipped, David?
It will be at that price.
It, it comes with a new cop and the monitor and stuff that we require to have on it. We'll keep the other four spare. And hopefully start doing some like dialysis patients and stuff like that with the other.
It's such a great service too.
It's been very well received over here. Done a lot.
Yeah. Um, just an update, uh, I know I emailed council, but we, um, we're discussing with another candidate for finance manager who declined. Um, so now this is the second candidate who's declined after being, having been made to offer. Um, so we, we have one candidate, um, who we may still go back and make an offer to, uh, or we may go back and repost it, go back to the drawing board and start, search over again. Um, real quick update on the annexation, uh, Steptoe is still working on the maps and the abstracting. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into making sure they know who, um, all the mineral rights belong to. Um, and so, uh, they're just going through that process right now and, um, we did just get an invoice related to the abstracting, so I'm hoping that one's closed over, uh, but that, that's where that process is at.
And that's the question I wanted to make at the conference, that meeting, why with that, did we take over treating the roads and everything or this or H? Uh, homeowner association still?
So right now, I haven't done anything, um, but I think where the discussion is right now is they want us to take over treating the roads for annexation. Um, because that's, there's, there's, there's two different, well, I mean, there's, there's a couple of different ways you can do it, but for example, there is an HOA in Fairmont that does its own road maintenance. Um, tells the city to stay out and, and that's what they use their HOA fees for. Um, that is where the conversation started with the Meadows, uh, because they, um, have that gate at the bottom of the road or had they get it bottom of the road and, and they recognize that if, if we give this over as public road, we're not going to be able to gate it anymore. Close people out. Um, as the conversation continued among themselves, I think they came to the conclusion that they'd rather lose their gate, um, and have the city come in and assist with, with road maintenance. Um, so right now where the conversation lies is, yeah, we would be taking over road maintenance.
Then we have them empowered to, to do that.
Yeah, well, and I think, you know, just, just to be candid, I think we're adding a, a tax base that will.
That's what I'm wondering, is it an equal?
Yeah.
Going to cover more or less?
Yeah. Only, so if we were only annexing the Meadows, the answer is no. Um, because just the tax base at the Meadows alone, uh, doesn't, doesn't rise to, because we're basically going to have to probably hire at least one more person, one more laborer, maybe more. We're going to have to get another fire truck. Um, and then candidly, I think that there's probably, that there's infrastructure issues up there in the streets that we're going to be dealing with in the next ten years. Um, with just them kind of being on shaky ground. Um, if we were just annexing the residents up there, then, then no, it doesn't work. Um, but this, this plan of annexation includes annexation, uh, of some of the business district on thirty-three, and that's what makes it work. Um, Mike and I were just talking about this, DOH has, has just sent over their, um, uh, their bridge inspections of the city-owned bridges. Um, it comes with recommendations on improvements that we can make to keep the fridges in good shape. Uh, so we'll be looking at those and, and seeing what we can get done in this next year. Um, and then the last thing, just to, to let you all know this, um, the LRA made deed on several properties, uh, in the past, I think, two weeks. Um, so they're, they're sitting in the other room. I haven't even given Sam that update yet, uh, but we knew they were coming, we knew we had lots of deeds coming. Um, and a handful of them came in the mail last week, so I think the LRA is going to have some, uh, some big tasks ahead of it. Uh, coming up very soon. Um, yeah, I think.
I had a question about the Fourth Street Bridge that was replaced by the new one. Has that become the city's responsibility now?
This, the Fourth Street Bridge over here, why, I think it always was the city's responsibility.
Yeah, the, the state disinspected it.
They disinspected, they just inspected.
Yeah, it's.
And do we have, like, do we have an inspection on that one current?
I think so. I think we have an October person.
Yeah, they just done, they just done this one and they've done the one down.
My son works for that company. That's good.
Now they've done this one, and then they've done the one down by the old bus garage. And I think they've done this one over here too. And that was probably within a couple of months ago.
Yeah, well, and so I have them in the other rooms, I can go grab them and look, but, um, they're.
Well, I, I know when they were considered, when DOH was considering building the new bridge, the conversation occurred that the old bridge, um, once, once they built the new one, uh, needed to be considered for major, major repairs or used only as a pedestrian bridge. And I'd like to know where we are with inspections and what the quality is and if council needs to be considering doing something in the near future.
Okay. We'll review those inspections, like, so we got them and have it reviewed and that, so we'll review them and get back to you. Tell you what, tell you what.
We can't let that go too long.
Oh, you want, you what? Did you know anything? No, I, I mean, when I was there, that bridge down there was, they, she's right, they was considering it, you could do, I don't know how major, major, you know.
Yeah, and I didn't either.
I inspected the bridge several times and they wanted to build a new one there, but they had a bomb house of their name, it wasn't feasible. So they said it would be, you could do the repairs to it. Or they was the one suggest you make it a footbridge, is what they was want to suggest. But I've since retired, so I don't know. So it's probably been inspected, it's on a, there's, if I'm not mistaken, that's a two-year inspection, this is a two-year inspection. And all your arch bridges that are in town that you guys own are on two-year inspections. I don't think you have any on a one-year. When they get to a one-year and a sixth month, that's when you have, that's when you know you got the problem.
You will provide an update on that next meeting?
Yep, for real.
Okay, anything else?
Could I ask a question about the annexation?
Yeah.
Mr. Mady going along with it?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll have to, until, uh, thirty-three up to, um, what, what road is that? Georgetown, yeah, thirty-three up to Georgetown Road, Georgetown over to Stillway. Let's fill one of them.
So all those businesses along that road come into that, and that includes Walmart, the hotels?
Not, not all the businesses, but several of the businesses, yeah.
Cause I was just thinking, you, that's about Surline and everything else out there is what's, is it the price here compared to there?
Yeah, so.
That, I mean, if I'm allowed to ask these questions, I mean, you waste your bombers.
So, the, 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 the business portion that we're looking to annex, um, is, uh, already tested. Um, so, so that part already has to, it's good to go. Um, and then we aren't necessarily obligated to provide sewer to things that are outside city limits. Uh, but then we take the Meadows in city limits and now we are obligated to provide sewer service out there. Um, this has been a large part of the discussion. I think one of the things that the sanitary board is actively weighing, um, because they have an earmark grant in, in the process for an eastward extension. Um, and the question is, do they want to use that to try to get up to the Meadows, or instead, do they want to take over the package plant and replace the package plant that's up there with a suitable package plan? Because the fact that sewer services are unsuitable is largely what has driven the Meadows to come in conversation with the city. Um, and so sewer is really what's, what's driving the whole conversation. Um, I think on the sanitary side, uh, the thing that is the going to be the most economical for all ratepayers would be if, if the sanitary board takes over the package plant and replaces it with a larger package plant. Um, and then I think that associates all needs by city charter and, um, puts them in a lot better shape up there than what they're in. associates all needs by city charter and um, puts them in a lot better shape up there than what they're in. Uh, but but a line extension remains on the tape. Um, like I said, there is a, there is an earmark that's that's in the works that could pay for that.
It's past the first phase.
It's past the first phase, it's not past every phase. Um, but I think the uh the the extension does result in, you know, at least two more uh, pump stations. It results in a long uh, run of line, um, which anytime you have a a long run of line like that, you have the opportunity for sewage to sit like flat in terms of that digging, cause more problems down at the plant. Um, so there's there's downsides to doing that, uh. But also, the DEP and EPA really like it when you have one outlet, not two outlets. So I think that's, that continues to be a discussion in the sanitary, it's, I think it's something.
Anything else? I I do, I'm, I know, I've asked it several times, but, and I know you're busy, but budgets, we're half, we're almost six months into the budgets.
Yeah.
And.
No, I'm I'm.
Kathy or somebody up to help me just to get the budgets.
Yeah.
Ready?
I, what I need is a finance manager.
Yeah, I'm gonna realize that.
Um, and and working hard to get one, um, but. Doing the best I can. I'm sorry, but I'm I'm still, like I said, I'm still prioritizing things of regulatory importance um, over things that don't have.
Own road progress report.
Yeah, that's that's due by the end of the month. And if I don't get that in, then, you know, that's eight hundred thousand dollars a year we lose, so.
No, I just didn't have the, we kind of, we pulled somebody up to give some assistance with that.
I'll make you progress. It's the 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 long painful thing with that is uh, the the way that we reconciling the the online payments that we take, um, because we're required by code now to receive payments online. Um, and they they don't come through as like one payment at a time. They come through mixed together. And you kind of got to sit there and sort out like, okay, I think that's three municipal fee payments plus a fire fee. I think that one's this plus this. Um, and it 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 really takes so, someone who knows what everything in the city costs, um, and and has a mathematical enough mind to sit there and go, well, I think that's one eighty five times three plus thirteen, sixteen plus this plus that, and try to tease out exactly what each of those is. Um, and it just, it just takes time. But I haven't forgotten about it. I'm still working on it.
Appreciate that.
That all you have, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, all your team, you have something?
I got something. Um, so I joked with you the last regular session that I'm waiting for, I sent a sys letter from my employer. Um, they've updated policy uh, to indicate that nonpartisan positions cannot be held uh, by certain employees, so um, yeah, so I'm looking at January as my last uh, regular session. Um, unless I uh, do something witty or legal, so uh that's to protect myself there. Um, but yeah, so I just want to throw that out there, so if January is like hanging up the hat, there it is, you know. But, yeah.
I'm sorry to hear that, Stephen.
Yeah, no worries. I mean.
Just as long as Adam knows, it's not because he came that. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Stephen, you've got to name your replacement.
I tried, I actually told somebody, said just in case, and they said no, quicker than I could say anything.